Okay, we should do that.
Clear your fuck head later.
It's not always an easy task for us. Some days.
Action work. It's good. Our show was working. I'm gonna go and have a couple of cold ones for this.
Oh yeah.
So.
The chance they're making to my place have a couple of cold ones.
I know, I I definitely wouldn't be driving the car, but I, well, that's too hot with the car, I'm like, oh man, I forgot, I'm like, well, I would have to give it up. Yeah. So.
Um, I went to. Well. I went to the.
Kobe and Stacy here as well. Or is that just for?
Oh yeah, and then go down.
The regular meetings that.
Registering.
I think usually regular meetings have Stacy here.
And they put those things.
But.
Yes.
Yes, Stacy will be here and Kobe will be at regular meetings.
Yeah.
Just me.
That should be right now.
You were right for that.
Right, because they're they really don't have, unless there's something for them to give input on or something.
Hi, Doreen. Hi, Doreen.
We got you sitting right, right there. That's where we put our clean and uh other.
Huh. Wait a minute, then I better get up and um.
You move over there or something. I thought you were going over there.
Oh, I'm just surprised.
Oh, no, you are. Good.
I'm the queen.
Some days.
So she, I can move down if you want. I'll let Doreen get set up. We're kind of cutting it close, Doreen.
I did, yes, I'm sorry.
That's all right. We all do that.
I just have to wait for a neat sweat application.
Yeah, I know.
I'm muted.
Situated, I'd like to get situated, so.
I am.
All right, perfect. Oh. Five o'clock, we'll call the order and we'll start with roll call or?
Erickson here.
Grant here.
Timber here.
Keel here.
Erickson here.
Orner here.
All right, six out of six. What stands for our pledge of allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna text Andy for a little bit.
Okay. Six, let's be, just a pledge of allegiance, I like to. I think Dr. Godfrey for, sounds like you're bringing that, brought that back for the school, I appreciate that.
We started doing that, uh today I started telling dad jokes. Just to tell her.
Just to tell.
They're kind of fun. Our goal is to have students take that over, so in the next couple of weeks, we'll align that and kind of get a schedule, who will come down and. We're gonna do announcements over the intercom every day, tell them what lunch is, any announcements we have, and then uh do the pledge together.
Kind of like that.
Mm-hmm. I think the kids like that.
We have a lot of positive feedback from him, so he enjoyed that. Was Andy, was Andy on or?
He is, we don't want him to be there.
Okay. So our, the whole business was budget construction updates with Andy and he's signing on here shortly. So I guess some of the time if you think of anything to ask him. Make a note, make sure when, once you get signed on, we can ask him that. Any other?
Could we add anything to new business or no?
We not, well. Technically, it's, we can't take action or anything, but we can, if you wanna bring something up.
Yeah.
We'll do that.
Just that one.
Yeah.
Bring my weekly.
Um, let me, let me see if he's having problems with, like, he showed a bit.
Well, there are other.
Okay.
Old business besides here that we can pick up, no one will be for Andy either.
All right, it's just a matter of him getting logged out, I guess, so.
Okay.
Is there something you want me to add in there, Nate?
Um, just about the uh keeping vehicles off the um, trying to get to the football field for games. Now that we have the practice field actually set up there, I mean, people have been normally driving across that way, cause it was all city ground before.
Okay.
And parking down at the fence in their vehicles. If there's any way we can maybe refrain from that for people keeping them out of there somehow, I don't know how we're gonna do it.
Um.
There's not really a path to get down there with a car.
You mean like how they used to come in on the pool?
Yes. You know.
Could you rope it off?
I don't care what it is, if it's rope signs, something, people, I don't know, how you're gonna do this.
We need to wreck that, but practically, we need to wreck that ground.
Well, that's the problem, we need to have people up and down it, drive them all over the place and, I mean, I've had them up in my yard for goddamns before, so.
Yeah, we put, we put messages out, but that's not gonna reach.
Yeah.
I don't, like, when it was left back there, didn't we park a bus in front of the, but they went around it?
Maybe. Oh yeah.
Yeah.
It wouldn't take much, put a few posts and rope across, I mean, it would take long.
We have all that from.
Post and rope and posts and, and that plastic stuff.
From the.
We gotta be trying something.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it's just an idea.
And it's.
It's a big, especially with the rain, moisture you have, it ain't gonna take much if it rains, it's gonna mud it all up and.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think we put posts and some rope up there, put signs say, um, no, no vehicles.
No, maybe some, in the road coming out to the pool, I mean, that's another access. I don't know what to, could it be we park a bus across the, on the road?
Like you said, it's easy.
That would at least block that, but as far as out here, I don't know.
I mean, if they go around. When we had the section tournament here and that was all roped up, I think they just put a barricade on the two down by us. And then.
Well, it'd be a start.
At the pool.
If they're going around it, then I guess we have to do something more, but.
Yeah. I think that, Tim, you'll have to ask Tom to be sure, but this white fencing with rope out here, I feel like there was a pile of that left over from when we really had it all roped up. So there might be some of that laying around somewhere.
Do we have a post?
Uh, it kinda looks like they're all the way across, but even there's another pile.
Do you need more or not more?
Why don't you show me real quick?
Like both white.
It's gonna take just a rope, just a hole.
There was rope that went across, they planted.
Should be, should be able to.
Apparently would be something that going from, they're like.
Yeah.
Were there only men, it's like a small room, like.
That's fucked up.
In between the church and that white house.
Right.
Tired.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
We want a deal leave though.
I mean, the, the access up to ground, well, I would say bus is fine, or whatever there, or van, whatever, but then if that's blocked.
Mm-hmm.
Then they're gonna come around and go through them.
Come around, come and read to the.
Yes.
They have all historically driven in on that driveway and they come across this grass and then they park.
Right.
Very long.
Right along the fence sometimes.
On the south side of the stands, mostly, you know, and too bad, I guess, but we can't have her across our home.
Mm-hmm.
Our yard, it's wet, probably has no shape there.
Well, and if they received it.
And if that ever was actually the, the football field, uh, we can't have that anyway, so they might as well get used to it.
No.
Okay. We are, Jordan, can you hear us okay?
Is Andy up here, Jordan?
Okay. Um, Andy is still working on digging on there, so if you want to go to Jordan first.
Okay. We're moving on to new business with Jordan.
Yeah, and then we'll come back.
We'll come back to it, yeah.
Jordan Anderson is the individual we've been contracting with from Freshwater Education District. I don't know if you had the opportunity to look at the budget report, but it looks pretty good. Um, I will let you know, a lot of that has everything to do with Jordan, digging into the numbers, and then we met, um, I gave him some ideas of. Different light items that we wanted to cut down on, um, so he has a pretty firm understanding where we stand, so with that, Jordan, I'll let you take over. Um.
Can I, can you turn it on? Is there a way that you?
I think this is good, but I think we need to.
To the volume?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that I, I'm not sure how to do right now, um.
Marshall, I'll turn it up.
Where's it coming on the top?
I don't, you just do it on the board, like on the side there maybe?
Oh, there it is.
It wouldn't be the board.
And there.
Wouldn't be the board.
No, cause it's connected to here.
Oh, okay.
But. I think, I think I can do it. It's a hundred percent. Hundred percent right now, so.
Okay.
See, if that doesn't work, then I'll figure something else next time.
Wanna try, speaking again, Jordan?
We have, um, right now, we're sitting at four hundred and thirty-five students enrolled, that's including pre-K, but we have volunteer pre-K, so we get um. Point six ATM for thirteen of those pre-K students, so we're sitting much better than last year, and we may get a reallocation once we see if there's any seats that go unused.
When does that number get set going, I mean, uh, does that?
October, right?
October is typically, Jordan, you could probably answer that better too, when is uh? Jordan, can you? Jordan, can you explain to the board what that cross subsidy means? Yep, so we have to pull from a different pot of money to pay what we don't get for reimbursed special ed expenses.
So, one thing that I noticed in here was, this says the district should ensure that all special ed transport costs are properly recorded. Was that not happening?
Uh, no, I think that's just their suggestion, so we do, our pastor should report at the end of the year.
Okay, so let's just uh. Okay, so that should be happening. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
If we go down further to student support personnel, and we haven't been utilizing either.
Yeah, yeah, we are, we are doing that now though, so.
Okay, that's good.
We have a carryover from last year, so we have a thousand dollars in um, the support aid, student support aid, so we're, we're allocating that now, part of it is school nurse, there's a percentage that will be charged to that. So this is for, um, when, when it came down two years ago, that's for any position that was created during COVID or any new position, so we couldn't use it for anything that's already existing.
Mm-hmm.
The difference is, the current nurses' hours and contracted days change, so there's a percentage of hers that we can charge them.
I guess the, you recommend on doing some cuts to, you, like, cause you have listed here, like, is that just a suggestion or an option, as far as your suggestion with the English teacher?
That's the one that was.
No, okay, that we.
Oh, okay, I'm gonna make sure that, okay. Let's say we. I don't know if we can yet.
No, I don't think it's.
Yeah. Making sure that we're on the same page.
And also a couple of things, um, so right now Stacy and I are working with, um, Jordan to develop kind of framework of a contract for his community in service with us, it'll be highly minimal. Once we get to this point, uh, we can cover a lot of it. Um, also, I did send out an email to teachers that their, their classroom supply funds are five hundred dollars. In all honesty, that's a pretty good amount of money for classroom supplies. Um, with our system now, teachers are putting in their own requisitions into SmartYard. And it goes through the flow to Stacy to code it correctly, and then to me to approve it, and then goes back to Stacy as final approver. Um, so I'm able to see if something's over budget, I can deny it, or I'll ask the teacher, you know, if this is an emergency, it's a need or a want. Um, you know, what's the possibility of getting along without it, or if it's something that's probably not necessary, it'll be, it'll be denied, so we stay within that framework, and I think with those things. And the services Jordan will provide, just probably keeping an eye on the budget, um, preparing a report for me to present and Stacy to present, and then. Making sure on occasion that we have things coded correctly in the system, so they're coming out of the right pots of money, so. I think we'll save money with that, as we pull away from the co-op using their financial services too. Right now, I do know we have some newer enrollments that haven't even been entered into JMC yet.
Okay.
So.
So, if we move forward with contract with Jordan, um, can we get out of our contract for financial services with the co-op?
I haven't signed anything.
Okay.
Again, and that's usually an annual thing, so.
Okay, good.
Um. So I don't see a reason why we can't do that.
At least for that portion, so we're not double paying on that.
There's other things I think that we're, we, we may be servicing, we may be paying for that we don't necessarily need, like tech integrationists, I don't know, but that's a necessity right now. Um, so there's a couple of other tips that might be in there, and then that'll, that'll be extra savings.
Okay. My other question, um, from this presentation is, why are we overspending on the food budget?
That's a good question, Jordan, did you see anything concerning there, because we should have.
No.
Student nutrition, um, is, is overspent? Another thing to realize too, that we probably, we did have, um, a pretty good, um, um, reserve balance in there, but we did pay off part of the construction with the student nutrition fund, so that dwindled down quite a bit.
Mm-hmm. I still just can't believe in that pocket when it's, we're being reimbursed for meals. There has to be.
Yes. Um, I don't know if the state's adjusting for inflation yet, so.
Yeah.
Food costs have not gone down.
Mm-hmm. That's something to keep in mind though, as we're talking about lunches, with, I have to imagine prepackaged items are a lot more expensive than.
Right, I've been, um, I've been watching, I'm watching, they're, they're actually, some of them, they're preparing, like breakfast sandwiches yesterday, they prepared those ahead of time, but they were handmade. Um, so I think they've been looking at it a bit.
Yeah.
Uh, looking at the menu too, it looks much better than what I predicted.
Okay.
And, so we're gonna limit impressables.
Yeah. It's a trigger word. Although my kids do like them.
About twenty, about twenty of them.
Yep.
Yeah.
Any, so any other questions for Jordan? I'll be researching that and applying, and then also access funding, which is special ed, um, they're pulled from special ed funding to provide, um, services for. With our title students or struggling students, so we can use those funds to, we do have one title teacher, we use primarily all of her title funding to pay her salary and benefits. We can use that to pay for some of our repairs, so I'm gonna try and apply for that, as we talked about the deadlines passed for this year, but I might be able to sneak it in and. Do a little begging, see how that can happen, that'll help offset pretty good costs.
Okay. Yeah, because like with our community ed, we're not even currently paying a director.
No, but, but I don't know if you, I don't know if the board realizes what it takes for a director, but they actually have to have like a degree in community education. So, uh, actually, the director that had, either has to have a degree in community education, minimum, uh, bachelor's, or the superintendent does. I've hired in the past a community ed assistant.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe that's what the difference is.
A community ed director probably costs the district a lot of money.
Yeah.
I think we're small enough, we could probably manage it ourselves, so.
Yeah, for sure.
Any other questions for Jordan?
It sounded like donations moving forward, how, then on the past, like, I asked you on that. If you went through the one-time purchases, it's, it was kind of. If you went through the one-time purchases, it was kind of confusing to, to me, and then I. Dr. Godfrey kind of clarified, sent him an email, he explained how that worked when they submitted it. And sometimes it just gets put in the general fund and. But like moving forward with the way you're accounting is you'll be able to like earmark the donations moving forward. So it's, I think that's the main thing we're worried about, just so we can get all documented recognition. Yep. Okay.
Yeah, I'm.
Okay.
So pretty much any, any donated money that when it wasn't fully expended went into general fund unassigned. It just supported the general fund reserves. And we spent on other things.
I guess. I don't know if it'd be really spent on other things, it would just spent, the money spent, but then it maybe wasn't earmarked properly or it is. That was only the other thing that kind of jumped out at me, but. It's ways we can improve for moving forward.
Absolutely.
That's what I did at LPA. Whenever we got a donation, especially if it, it was like, for instance, our greenhouse, all those donations went to an assigned fund. Just for the greenhouse fund. Anything else, like sometimes we had donations to our ad program, we just have an assigned fund just for that. Student activities, same thing.
Some of the challenges we're looking forward to, like on the CTE side, I know it's the tough. I think we really want to focus on growing that, but the same sense, we have a budget concern, but.
I think over time.
Okay.
Definitely grow that. Right now, we're just working on budgeting for our, our two teachers, making sure they stay within those. Making sure we're budgeting enough for them to, you know, be capable of providing those experiences, but staying within that same time.
I appreciate Jordan's input on that, when he pointed out, oh, that if we don't provide any other, another, we might have a possibility of losing students if we do away with too much.
I mean, that's the same with combining, having one section of elementary classes, that's hard for. I mean, these, the ratio looks low for two, but it looks high for one compared to what we're used to.
You can move teachers, I would not, when we're looking especially elementary, I would never go in a whole teacher because enrollment is like an hourglass. So we typically just move them and they follow the grade. And as you can see, that, the lower numbers are gonna probably shift out eventually.
Is there any other questions for Jordan, or concerned nothing else popped out anybody, or? Why does it not, really have to, thank you for going through things, Jordan. I don't know if there's anything else that you, you thought of at last minute to share with us, or?
Thank you, Jordan. I appreciate it. We'll be in touch.
Thanks, Jordan.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Well, we can move back to old business, first, Andy's still on the line here too.
Andy, do you want to share your piece?
You hear us, or are you muted?
Yeah, you're muted, Andy.
There's someone.
If you go down to the bottom. Well, no, I don't know what happened there.
Yeah, we got multiple.
If you want to open up a window and then you go down to that arrow that's pointing up, that's where you share it. There you go.
Cause everything you're sharing is.
There you go.
With you right there. Cause we don't, yeah, you didn't share with any of that with us previously, right? Or today anyways. Yeah, there was no attachment, so.
If you, and if you share it and then go to that tab, you just work from that tab. Or, or your spreadsheet. If you want to share your spreadsheet, then go directly to your spreadsheet. Is it, is it an Excel spreadsheet, or is it slides? Do you want to send that, send that to me now, and then I'll try and put it up for you? There you go. Now, if you go directly to the Excel spreadsheet, you should be able to scroll through it. He's a, he's a newbie for Google, so. And, and Andy, and Mike, Andy, is this correct? Usually in general conditions, oftentimes there is money left over at the end?
Can I ask a question too? Andy, can you hear me? Okay, we didn't have a trailer. You guys housed in our building.
And that was, and that was discussed early on, that they were using the office and shop.
And that it was gonna be a savings. Between that, there was a savings on snow removal, things that were.
We saved on storage, cause they were able to use the CT, some of that shop tool for storage and.
How did the sales tax come out to such a round number? Do they just allow us to have this many dollars that? This is on like for sales taxes.
Too clean.
Yeah, it's way too clean for a sales tax number. So did everybody fill it out that you asked them to or was required to?
So what did that final number come in at then?
Sales tax?
Yeah.
One point five.
That's not what it came in at. That's what was budgeted. It came in far below that, correct?
I'm not sure. I know with the last round.
The original estimate was one point five, but.
The last update that we were given, we were told that sales tax reimbursement was only coming in at like seven hundred and some thousand or eight hundred and some thousand.
That's right.
Was that what we were paid? Was that what was paid as of now?
I think you were, we were still waiting on it.
So that last check we got four thirty-five. Um, and I talked to Stacy, but my understanding was that was the last payment, but I can double check them out.
I thought that come in like under, just right at a million. Remember it didn't under something like nine hundred or something.
It was one point five and then it was one point two and then we were told it was coming in even less than the one point two. Well, good. That's good news.
So my thoughts are that's what we received recently.
Okay.
Because I think, yeah, that last one we had was like forty-five.
So what am I missing here? Because if he has the budget showing as finishing in the black.
Well, that's not including the retainage.
Okay, so it is the retainage.
Exactly, Andy. So there's, that's not including the retainage, so it's still out there.
Okay.
What's a capital two? So what's a capital two funding? A three hundred twenty-four thousand.
Tim, do you have any idea what the difference between the, I mean, obviously the earnings, that should be what we earned on that interest, but referendum bond premium?
Um, the referendum bond premium, we reimbursed that. Um, and that, would that be to the dealers? Andy, that bond premium would have gotten that reimbursement done.
So what line item are you questioning, Andy? Or you don't have a clear understanding on? Mm-hmm. Yeah. Uh-huh. Mm-hmm.
So those other funding sources, um, the majority of, are those funding sources that were allocated by the district to go into the budget? Or is that something I went through K A to go into the budget?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I can see that.
Mm-hmm. So like basically in a nutshell, what you're saying is that first section, that is what we came to the table with saying, we have this money available. And so if we didn't have that money.
Or projected, we'd have it available.
Projected.
Projected that we would have it available. So if we didn't have that, um, it's like, how do we even figure that out?
So it was like the bait that bond right away at the beginning, was that put in there on day one? So was all this funding upfront or is that as we went, we added some of these line items?
I, I think basically what Andy's trying to say. Andy's trying to state is those are different.
Andy, can I ask you a quick question? Just because I don't understand how you do this, so. No, not at all. On the, on the original, so if you scooch down, you said you had allocated seven hundred and fifty for F F and E. Um, and that is just the amount you, you said you don't know what it actually came in at. Don't those invoices flow through Krause Anderson to pay? Okay. Okay, so is there a way, Tim, for us to go back and actually see if that's where the overage is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Andy, can you do me a favor?
Mm-hmm.
Hey, Andy, do you know, do you have a list of the contractors for F F and E? Um, I can. Okay, if you can let me know so that, did that start with, uh, start with the architect and then? Because then I can do a dive into our, uh, our budget and see what we've paid out so far.
I forgot, the architect.
The architect helps with.
Oh, helps. I see what you mean, yeah.
And then they'll use, they'll contribute.
Okay. Where did our playground service come, that come out of L T F M?
Yeah, it must have been because their L T F M funds are.
Yep.
Andy, can you go back to the main spreadsheet again? To the top portion there? So Tim, the things that I wrote down here that we may want to check on are the ailers management. Did we get fully reimbursed for that? And then. I, I think we just gotta start asking some questions about the additional district funding. Like if that actually came out of, like what that was.
And what it went for.
What is a capital two for three hundred twenty-four thousand? Was that ever done?
Any of this?
I think that's.
No?
That wouldn't have been a moan.
So that would be.
Yeah, that's the other one.
Yeah, that's, that costs for three hundred some thousand.
Right there's three hundred some thousand that we never borrowed that was explained for somewhere shortfall.
So there you're up to, between additional district funding, capital two, you're up to seven hundred thousand plus, if we never got that ailers reimbursement, that was five hundred?
That is, that's a reimbursement we're getting from ailers?
That's how, Andy, explain that again. That was, well, it was money that is, was counted.
Ailer's management.
So we gotta, we gotta, we gotta verify that ailers management number then.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, you have additional district funding. Has that been put in there? Is that something we haven't paid yet, that two thirty-three?
That would have been money that we pledged saying that we had. Like that top.
My guess is that would probably be something from general fund on restricted.
Right.
But has, have we, has that been paid out of there? If not, if you take that two thirty-three, six oh five out also, that'd be added to that seven hundred and some for a shortfall. We're getting to our million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
We gotta verify our sales.
The, the additional district funding, if it was never, check was never wrote out, then it changes it down at the bottom again, that, your nine hundred and seventy-one thousand.
It's pretty much all spot on.
Then for sure.
It's like, I could've put in there just to make the balance. They probably just needed, they just threw the number in there, but we never allocated out of general funds.
I don't believe the funds are in there to allocate out of general fund.
Right.
No, but I'm just saying that's.
But that would make the most sense.
Mm-hmm.
They, that's where it was projected to come from.
Mm-hmm.
I wasn't on here at the time, so I just.
Outwards.
Yeah. I mean, the, there was nothing we can do about the additional district funding or the capital two because we didn't do those things, but Ailer's actually.
Yeah, like doing five dollar card and something. It doesn't work.
Right.
I think we need to verify the sales tax too, I suppose.
That's what happened.
You know, if that's projected one point two.
That'll be easy.
Yeah.
So Andy, the reason I'm asking questions, I wasn't on the board, I got on in January along with Brian, so we're trying to come up to speed on everything, so.
I think, I think this helps. I think it at least gives us a.
Oh. So.
Other food services, has that been covered? The two hundred and twenty thousand other food services, was that transferred over? Do we know?
Yes.
It was, okay.
That was transferred over.
So everything else.
The fire suppression got, is paid, you said to them? Where did that come out, was that, no, there was talk that that was gonna transfer out L T F, it wasn't, was that the one that was gonna be paid with L T F M? Okay, so that was trans, that did get transferred out of that then?
Probably came from construction.
Can you go back to the top, top, whatever the funding is, I'm just looking at the funding one more time. So just still, could, yeah, bond, that's good. What's referendum breakdown two? What's that line?
I think the same as capital. Okay, that's true.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
So all the, yeah, all the other revenues there, it's those three red ones.
Yep.
As long as the sales tax there.
I feel like it was salt of a million if I'm being perfectly honest.
I thought it was in the nines.
Do we know what the bills are, we just gotta make sure our incomes are it's at, and that would, those three red ones is a big one, it says that there were, money's like, we just threw a line item in there and they never had fu, never had it funded.
Uh-huh.
That's what it looks like.
Right.
Ellers would know a lot of this too.
Yeah.
So I, I'll, I'll first work with Stacey's, dig in, uh, construction fund to see exactly. With those numbers, it'd be easy to research. And then I'll contact Shelby too.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Oh, yeah. Yep. She and I talked that, talked through that too, so. Ellers would be the, they'd be the fund management for us, so they should have a, a good idea and they could tell me whether or not, yes, that money was there or no it wasn't.
Mm-hmm.
Andy, you said that you updated this from the one that you showed me last time? Okay, appreciate it.
I think we got our numbers here, we gotta keep this separate, I'd probably confuse things here too, cause then, we gotta keep these numbers separate too, cause what, there's always talk on where the, where the. Okay. Yeah, where the property values come to, I know when we bought, that's something for us to keep in mind too, like, but at first I thought some of that was included on here, but it's not, so.
What's that?
The actual property that we purchased for the project too, so that's separate. Yeah.
That's not in the original, is that?
No, that's not listed here.
Forty-eight million?
No.
So actually it's higher than that.
Yeah.
What's that?
Cause right, Andy, the property, the property we purchased, you don't have listed here, correct? Okay, yeah, so I just wanted to make sure it was clear. Yep.
Any other questions for Andy? Um, as far as, only, only really the training.
Probably use equipment. You know what time it'd be around here in the night there? Okay. Yeah, I think that kinda filled into what I was gonna bring up too, you brought up the landscape already, so, yep.
I do, I do have a question, Andy, we've been talking about hiring, um, lawn service. Cause it's quite a bit of area for studio staff to keep up with it. Would that void any contracts? Okay, good. I will move on now. Get somebody here to cut it regularly.
Yeah. Oh, is there any other questions for Andy or? I think I'm good and nobody else. Otherwise, we can just let you go, Andy, appreciate the time, unless you can think of something else for the moment here, but.
Yep. Thank you, Andy, I appreciate it.
That'd be great. But, thanks for your time, Andy.
Thanks, Andy.
We'll move on to our next discussion item would be the preliminary levy, looks like you have a link on our agenda. For that as well. Which.
Yep, so this is basically, so you have two approvals of the levy, you have the initial, which would be at the board meeting. Our September board meeting, then December board meeting will do the final. Um, numbers really aren't gonna change. Let that, hold that up. So basically you levy max, so basically we're levying what we've levied for in the past.
I'll send the category, cut off on money.
So. Yeah. So the things we levy for are, um, L T F M's levied, uh, we have a local optional revenue, which is seven forty-two, that'll go up eventually. So seventy forty-two for student, um, community head is levied. Um, there's a couple other, uh, debt service, some of that is levied. And then, uh, unemployment is levied, I looked at our unemployment amount, so you know, staff can now, nine month employees can offer unemployment, she's not on unemployment. That right now is being provided by the state, we can't levy for that. Um, I asked what our typical unemployment was for last year, it was only sixteen dollars, so I chose not to levy for that. Such a mess going on. Um, but next time, when it comes to September meeting, I'll have a hard copy of this for you guys, you can see it better. When I put it in, it can look like that, very much. This is a typical routine, so you, you know, what we'll do is September board meeting, you do the preliminary, uh, approval of the levy. December, we'll do our business meeting. We do a finance discussion, I'll work with Ellers to create that presentation. We'll do that meeting early and then we'll go into general meeting after that. And then the board will approve the final levy, which will be the updated document, but these numbers probably will not be changing.
So what would happen if we sold the building, our L T F M levy should reduce, right?
It shouldn't because it's a per student levy, so I, I don't think it'll, L T F M will reduce much at all.
Okay. Even if we were to sell the building?
Yes, yep.
Huh.
Just around as many expenses over there.
I know, but we were being told that we could offset future levies with the savings of the.
That's right, we are.
L T F M.
Um, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be reduced by much. And looking at our L T F M levy this year, the, the projected, it's not a lot of money either.
Do they get based out off the age of this building and the buildings?
Yeah, yeah.
So, we may see a bit of offset just because it's a newer building, so that will, that will change a few things. Uh, and then as you have aging buildings, there's other levies that are not, but are approved that are automatic. So that'll probably change as far as taxing our community members. Uh, it's not gonna be a big change.
So now that we just, you know, this is brand new, I think then the shop, they have the age of this C T E building in there, that's not that camera, that's not that old either, but then.
Yeah.
But then, yeah, the big one was the, the dinosaur over there, so.
How does this number compare to last year?
I'd have to look, I'd have to pull up, there's a different code to pull that up.
Just curious.
I'll do that, I'll have that for the September meeting to see our comparables.
Yep. That's a little bit different, kinda thought that was gonna, could've still been different on the L T F M. Based on the age average of.
You said it will change, but it'll be some minimal.
Okay.
Then nobody will even notice, yeah.
Not much, I mean, some people will because of those fixed incomes, every dollar counts and worst, but it's gonna be minimal.
Any other questions on the levy, cause I guess kind of saying to me, kind of just go for the max and we just, we kinda itemize it out to match the max, so.
Pretty standard.
Otherwise, if there's no other questions? Finish up our preliminary levy and we'll discuss, we can move on to your, you have hats in school next on the, for this discussion item, or is that an informant or?
That's just informal, so I, I emailed the board today, kinda looking at the changes for students, yep. Laying wear hats in school is a battle, I know not everybody believes that it should be allowed, but teachers have discretion in their classrooms, if it becomes an issue, um, then we'll, we'll remove it.
Did somebody bring up the idea or was it questioned or why?
Well, it's a fight with students, cause a lot of kids are farmers and they wear hats all the time, they come in, they have their hats with them, they'll leave it on the classroom without thinking about it. So it's just giving them that freedom. They're not allowed to wear hoodies. Um, hoodies cover your face, you can't see if you're paying attention or what. Um, but it's a way of just giving them a little bit of extra freedom and not fighting that battle. I'm sure, a lot of you guys wear hats outside, I wear hats occasionally, but I hate wearing a hat, so. It's just, it's just a way to give them a little bit more freedom, teachers again will have the option to say, no, not in my classroom.
I know we're never allowed to have a building, but, um, which. I can look past that, but I would rather if they're, I think, sitting on their desks, I think it should be on the floor.
That's, that's an old school.
Cause they can see their faces.
Yeah, I get that.
But if you want it up to the teacher, I guess that's a.
I could say, uh, we talked, I talked to, to one teacher and said, you know, I often forget to tell them to take it off, we just get started right away. We did this at L P A two and actually Colby brought this to my, my attention, cause he said it's been a, uh, it's been a constant battle.
They've had petitioned, I think I asked Landon, he said they've same, done petitions in the past and.
Yeah, they did that in my last district, and we said, okay, it had been causing problems and the only kids wearing hats were the kids that were getting caught wearing hats. So it didn't really, it didn't change any engagement or anything.
But I think two are gonna do that and say, teacher, that's a rule, then you live by it, if you're not going to, then we will get rid of it at all, at all cost, at all. So you better have respect for what that teacher says.
Yeah, enforcement's the.
Enforcement would be the big thing, if they don't wanna, um, go by the rules, then we'll just get rid of it completely then.
Yep, we're gonna, Colby and I are gonna have a, um, we're gonna have a nine through twelve three meeting Friday morning, just kinda set expectations for the year. And then we're gonna introduce hats in the open campus and it's gonna be, this is a privilege you're getting, it can easily be taken away if you abuse it.
I know it's a little bit different than we were. I don't, I don't know how many kids, we weren't, Jeffers, we weren't allowed to, we come up here, we weren't allowed to wear, so. Except for hat day, I think there's one year, one day a year, I think you can wear hats in school, but.
I wasn't allowed to wear them in school. I don't, still afraid of my teachers too.
I think, but the teachers have the ultimate, saying in their classroom is extremely important.
Absolutely. Again, we try and minimize the battles the teachers have to fight in the classroom so they can focus on instruction.
Makes sense, and their room is their room and they can, they'll call the rules and.
Yeah. Anything else on hats?
No, I guess you're.
I'm not gonna look over there.
Your experience.
It's a respect thing for me.
Yeah.
I get, I, you know, there's a military thing for me, that's one reason I hate wearing hats, that's the reason I had to.
Mm-hmm.
But you have to take your hat off when you come in the building, you absolutely had to have it on when you're outside, if you're in uniform.
Yeah.
So hats are, so yeah, touchy subject.
Well, your experience of it, you said it, your past districts, you did the hats, similar policy or similar approach?
Similar approach, um, I got approached by the student council, um, they kinda overstepped the principle, I said it has to be taken to the principle first, but I supported. Like it's, in the greater scheme of things, I understand the respect, um, these kids wear hats and it didn't change our academic scores at all when they went to wear hats, you know.
That's just a nine twelve deal then?
So, we're gonna go seven twelve.
Seven twelve.
Yeah, but we're gonna talk with nine twelve separately because we wanna talk about, nine twelve, we'll have open campus, so we're gonna talk with them, then we'll, we'll approach seven through twelve. No elementary though.
And I can keep that, keep the hats out of the boardroom then?
No.
I got in trouble, I'm gonna go now. Not too far away.
All right, look at Brian. Oh, otherwise, I think, you know, I think we all, we're all pretty open on how we feel, but we're gonna trust you and the authority and let them earn it, so.
Next time.
Yep.
Yep.
All right. Brought up a hiring additional kitchen staff?
So I, um, I've been working with our kitchen staff and I, I don't think that the layout is most effective, so for instance, breakfast, there, there was such a long line getting breakfast this morning, some kids were like going to class, we need a better way to streamline it. And I watched them serving for the smaller, it's a, so I would've set it up for two lines, it should've been wider the opening, so they had two lines. Right now, we have the a la carte that's blocking one of the possible serving lines, so we're gonna try and figure out a way, maybe we can move that out, and have two serving lines. Um, but watching them, they're, they're working. Um but watching them, they're they're working pretty fast, as fast as they can considering the room they have and considering manpower. When they do, they have a dishwasher, when that person's not washing dishes, they help serve. So then we have two people on the line and one person bringing stuff to the line. But we have so many kids coming at one time, one lunch line, serving line. It's not kind of. And I I'm not sure if it was designed for two lo- lines, it should have been. Uh so hiring that additional kitchen staff and even moving find part time will help expand that. So we're going to work to to move towards two serving lines. So kids can get their food, have plenty of time to eat and socialize. But again, like today, it's so backed up, they got their lunch, their breakfast, they sat down and school's starting.
If you're not gonna have time, it's gonna get thrown away.
Yeah, exactly, and.
Or not used.
Some of those kids rely on it.
If I look at that, the financial for hiring somebody, but then to your point, well, how the efficiency to get them started early, so then you're not rushing to throw it away and then, yeah.
I look at it, the ones that need not getting that, the meal at home for whatever reasons, getting sure to get fed here correctly.
And and also understand too that we, it's free breakfast and free lunch for everybody, so more people are willing to eat because of that. Um but I'll have that on the board agenda for approval, adding that person um for September and then we'll start, I'll start working with kitchen staff to find somebody.
You know, this one's just a little bit of a hard one for me, I'm being honest, because I with the. Circular conversation we've had for the last two years surrounding lunches. It's hard to agree to bring on another person when. I I know there's plans for improvement, I know there's plans for training, but to pay another person, that's a hard one for me.
Well, paying another person allows to expand our serving lines from one to two. If we have two serving lines, it'll be much quicker for them to get through. Right now, it's not possible. Uh it wouldn't be possible to have two serving lines with the amount of staff we have now. But that is the big overarching goal is to go to two serving lines.
If the dishwasher would help serve with that, would you have enough staffing then or?
So she could help serve for a short period of time. Because um the return tray return window, it just starts getting stacked up.
Oh yeah.
E- even if we have enough trays and utensils for everybody in the building, it gets stacked up. So she's gotta go clear that window, run through the sanitizer and get that done.
Oh, just saying, if you could wash the dishes after everybody eats, or somehow you could.
It'd be tough.
I get what you're saying, there's a lot of trays that sitting around then, but.
But we we did broach that conversation too of bringing her in, but it'll be for, it'll be for such a short period of time.
Just during the serving time, basically like?
Maybe for the very first quarter of the serving time. Then keeping up the dishes after that as they stack up.
Oh yeah.
So this person you're thinking would be a part time kitchen staff?
I think that's all we need.
Yeah. So right now, we have three full, four full times?
Um I I don't believe our dishwasher's full time.
Okay.
But I'd have to look at that, but I'm pretty sure hours are not full time. And we have a director, which by law we have to have, that'd be Bonnie, and then we have the two. Uh food service workers, but Bonnie does still, I mean, she's in there serving and everything too. So I've been watching and. They are, they're doing a good job serving, it's just some of the kids coming at one time for lunch. Yeah, and I'd go back to design. Um I, the kitchen should have designed, or should have been designed for two serving lines right off the bat, which means those roll up doors should be wider. And then you have your return line for dishes and everything. Um some of the equipment that was hired in there is probably. Not the best idea, their stove is about, their stove looks like an apartment sized stove, it's commercial range. Um they said they wanted a griddle to make fresh pancakes on, but there's no way they could do it. There's no, and you can't put anything in the oven.
Like the big, there's not room for the bigger commercial trays that you can, like we envisioned?
Their oven is basically this wide.
So I thought that there was like other things though that functioned the same. Like that convent, convection, big huge thing and.
The convection oven.
Um that's usually to reheat, so that's, that's a reheater. Um. The uh the stove itself is what they would cook more homemade, the fresh meals on. So we, those convection, we used to call them rethron.
Mm-hmm.
So what they'll do is as we get food in, trays going there, that brings it up to temperature. And then they serve it. Um whether it's handmade or prepackaged, but. I will say, I looked at the menu and when they start the A V, and I've never been in a district that had two main courses. We always had a main course and then somebody didn't want the main course, we'd make them a ham sandwich and chips or something. I've never seen an A and B choice, and some are pretty good.
Yeah.
How many hours would you be thinking? This would be as as a part time?
I I talked with them, but I I think just basically as a server, I can't see more than four hours. Um looking at helping set up right before lunch, serving and help a little bit clean up. Yeah, but I can't see much more than that.
You don't really have any other flexibility for another staff to go in there, to pull from somewhere else to go in?
Like could we utilize a para?
Probably not, um we just are reallocating para time now because we've got a few students in that one to one.
Okay.
So. Um. So probably not. And that person would have to agree to it too. That's another thing, so it would be a different part of their contract.
Yeah. Yeah, cause then basically. When you go move forward, I guess at the business meeting, it has to get approved anyways and then. Once it comes to that, if it looks like it's, if we think it's too much and we can.
I wouldn't bring it to the board, looking at our budget numbers now, I wouldn't bring it to the board if I didn't feel comfortable.
Yeah.
It's not going to be a a very huge expense, so I mean, I I wouldn't bring it to you guys if I didn't feel comfortable thinking, can find some other budget looks like now.
I think that's the biggest concern was the financial impact, so especially when we're to talk about the budget. But I think you've been proven to us on, that you're keeping track and you're serious about getting the numbers correct and. So was there any, I guess in there with the kitchen staff, are they opened a, like the rearrangement or?
Yes, they are, um cause I walked in and I was shocked. I was shocked that there's not two serving lines set up. And they said that they were never told that, I've never seen an a la carte either in a small school. And we usually don't have a la carte, um. So there are some things I think I would have done differently, just in the the design of the kitchen. Space wise, it's set up perfect, what they need.
Mm-hmm.
Again, there should be two serving lines.
About some of the equipment that's in there, I know this is a stretch for a kitchen topic, but can we return any of that stuff that they're not gonna use?
Probably not.
Not a darn bit of it.
No, and a bigger, bigger reason they can't, what I was told is when they moved over, you you really would get that training before school starts? They moved over and the trainers came to train them during the school day.
They did.
Yep.
And they said we, and I don't blame them, I mean, that's, that's a tough time.
Yeah, they're trained to be getting ready and.
Yeah, they said we, we can't, we can't do the training, so it's never rescheduled for them. So we're working on that, I'm working with um Andy on that because he can help schedule that training. And that's with the salespeople of that specific equipment.
I mean, they're in looking, just walking through, there there are things that I don't, I don't know that they would ever utilize that were bought.
Probably not, I mean, they could. Um that's on just gonna, do you use some of the items in there? It's gonna take longer.
Yeah.
To make food.
Like meat cutter, there's a meat cutter in there, there's.
It's interesting that you bring that up because my last district, they got rid of the meat cutter. And they just sat it out and was going to dump, what a real place, can I have that? Sure. It weighed like a hundred and fifty pounds. To come back to school and our head. Cook said, hey, where's my meat cutter? I'm like, whoa, I did. But she wanted, and she didn't use it that often, but it's cheaper to slice the.
Mm-hmm.
Meat that way than to buy.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So are those, like that's the very kinds of things though that we should be, that hopefully come about in this training too?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
And those meat slicers are automated, they're automatic, they just put it in there and they set the the guide on it and they let it slice it.
I do have concerns with the fact that we don't have an oven. I mean, it's unreasonable to think that they're gonna be able to make homemade meals on a college sized oven.
Yeah. We should pop in there when we're done with our meeting, I'll show it to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So who who designed the kitchen? Was it K, was it, it's what we asked for, I mean, I wasn't here.
I was not part of any of that.
It's anyone else's fucking context.
Yeah.
It didn't ask for kitchen staff and they were not asked for any input, so my opinion.
I'm sorry, we're playing.
Your building for the people that are actually cooking the meals, you'd have their input on what would work best for them.
Yeah.
I remember it being discussed in the kitchen staff, or the um, they had a designer come in and design the kitchen as to what they felt the needs would be.
Yeah.
Just live in and learn and if the best of intentions maybe go one way or.
That's why I say if we could return or even trade up or something, some of that equipment and get what they need in there.
Wait till you see where the equipment is in there and how it's.
Then it's not, yeah, it's landlocked kind of or.
I don't know if they're firm or import, could be though, we'll have to see. What I think we do, we can, we can work on that as we build up our student attrition reserves again, cause we will build those up.
Mm-hmm.
And then we can look at purchasing, I can check on those things, my guess is.
Not a chance, yeah.
Yeah.
Mine too, but it's worth a shot.
Otherwise, move forward with our set adult meal prices, I guess I'll take the other breakfast two fifty, lunch five oh five?
Yep, so we gotta recommend, we got these things from M D for student attrition, and it's the recommended models to increase adult meals too. So I just print it to the board and it's be approved. Which will probably helps some, I won't say substantially with the student attrition reserves, but it'll, it'll help some.
How many adults are that?
Teacher, staff.
Yeah, most teacher, okay. You've been eating too here?
I don't find time to eat.
No.
Sometimes I'll run home real quick and grab it, leaving a peanut butter sandwich, which I actually hate peanut butter sandwiches, but. Better than ramen, I guess.
Otherwise. Then we move on to the Robert Lang land purchase or easement?
So.
There's no other discussion on the, didn't sound like anybody was too worried about that.
So Mr. Lang's contacted me a couple times with the, the construction of the walking path, it's blocking from getting into his field. And he's very polite about it, he said, he wondered if he could purchase that lot so he can get in there or we can do an easement. I think we should make an exception for him. To allow him to cross the path to access the harvest. I think we could probably have something in there that, um you know, if it's wet, can't access it that way, something, I think we need to do something for him, so.
Was that just to cross the path is what he needs?
Yes.
So just an idea. Um what if you put some metal slab in there? That was deep enough that would still work as a walking path and you could cross it and never doing anything of either, just food for thought.
Yep.
So.
I don't like easements, just gonna be honest.
I think.
Well, even beyond that, it's, I think putting in the walking path. You know. I don't want to say we're at fault for not accessing his land.
That's not his land.
No.
So.
And, I mean, it's not his, he's not accessing via his land. He was always accessing.
Through that.
Through our land. And there is a field access about a half a mile down, it's just not big enough.
No, so this whole thing started, Chris told him, cause he owns all his corn, he's like, I can't go out steep field approaches. On all of his fields. So I looked this morning and I talked to Chris this morning, there was one like three hundred feet from the corner of the field. There's another one about halfway down. And Chris is like, that one's actually flatter than swimming pool driveway. So Chris is like, I'll call Robert and just tell him we'll use a field approach.
Can you keep in touch with Chris and see how that goes? This discussion?
Yeah, I didn't know, he did say he likes to park stuff there. My personal thought, as a farmer, I don't expect to use any of his land to park.
Well, right, there's always more lands before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why he just did what he liked, what he wanted to do, because. If that was my feeling, he's got two nice field approaches there, I would not expect to use anybody else's.
You guys can as well as anybody, if you're gonna farm and you got access it, you need a driveway.
Yeah.
And the one is really, I mean, it's plenty one, the middle one's plenty one for a semi, like.
Yeah. Not so many efficient, I don't know, but it looks big enough.
It's nicer than multiple field approaches.
Here's the other thing, if easements are perpetual. The plan is always the at, the forever plan, hopefully we get there someday, is to have ball fields in that very location. So then we're.
You'll have to do something anyway.
You would have to, so if if, let's just say the ball fields were built, would we still be having this conversation?
No.
Not a chance.
So, that's you made the contact, if you wanna just follow up on that one and make sure that we have, that get called again, when you know what to say.
Yep. Yep, I can do that.
Okay.
Cause I just have a picture of that, you start doing that map and. Around people sees it and then they.
Well, that's.
In the easement is for, I mean, it's perpetual, so like it's gonna be in place until the land changes hands, so if we were to build a ball field.
Yeah.
You would kind of have to allow him to still go in and out of there.
That's why.
If you, if you in an easement, you wanna have a tuck, tuck date on that easement?
Most of them, like if you.
Most don't, but you have to.
Most don't. And most take mutual consent. So is he gonna mutually consent?
I can say if there's no field approaches, then it would be something, but there's, there's literally one, like two hundred fifty feet from the corner.
Right on the map because. Yeah, it's not far from.
Yeah, I never had it.
He hasn't had one, he should have been doing it years ago. I looked when I come into town this morning, that's why I don't, so I think I don't think it's, I don't think it's our issue.
I don't think the lines would be happy with their uh. Investment in a path to being ripped up by heavy machinery everywhere.
Over with it.
Like I said, I paid extra attention, slowed down this morning when I come into town and looked at it, so.
Okay.
Just getting confirmation that.
Mm-hmm.
You can.
Yeah. Yeah, that's Brian. About the amendment to the count, school district calendar?
So we talked about this in negotiations committee meeting, or negotiations, yeah, negotiations committee meeting last week. And we're currently way over the required contact days and required contract days. Um our calendar currently goes the week past uh Memorial Day weekend. So we would like to uh approach board to amend the con, the calendar and we're still so far out to drop off that last week. Um because if somebody graduation will stay May twenty second.
I don't know.
In future years, probably move um graduation to the Saturday before the last week of school. Seniors don't come the last week as it is. That's a better time with less going on. We did it in LPA, we did it the Saturday before Memorial Day weekend, we had more participation because we didn't have families going out of town. So not just, not families of the graduates, but I mean families from our community that like to watch graduation. So that's for future, but raise the board in September for an amendment to the calendar. Will be dropped in the contract days and the contact days and then we're looking at negotiating that into the new agreement with teachers too.
And that'll still leave us like four or five days for snow days?
Way, we're more than that actually. So the legislature changed it, you have to have a hundred and sixty five contact days, but then you have to have so many minutes. You'll find that you're probably over the minutes by two weeks. When it all boils down to it.
And it's, you got the contract date.
I just don't, like I, it, my puzzled face is not arguing this, I love this actually, but it's just we, the amount of conversations we had about minutes. And in person minutes and like I think of the year that we had a lot of snow and we had kids staying until. You know, ten to four and doing that all spring long to make up for all of that time.
So we'll take advantage of our e-learning days of course, first day, right now in our school day. If you look at minutes per school day at a hundred and seventy two contact days, those minutes already gets a day in our calendar. That five student contact, or five e-learning days and the district can forgive as many snow days as they want up into the hundred sixty five.
Mm-hmm.
Um and that's including, that's aside from five e-learning days. You'll find that if you sit down and actually count the number of minutes that students are in class learning. We're way over what's required and obviously we're way over on what was required by contact basis.
So is that something maybe make lunch five or ten minutes longer if you're gonna have an open campus, so you get a little more time to?
Well, the thing about doing that is I want them to be responsible too. I mean, if they complain out ahead, we're gonna, once we put this in place, we're gonna notify our local establishments too because it's, they're probably gonna go to the gas station, they're probably gonna go to Legion, they're probably gonna go get lunch there. So that's gonna help their businesses too and that's kind of a double win, so we'll let them know to be prepared for that, but. Teenagers, and you give an inch and they take a mile.
Well, I just wonder if they had enough time now, I guess they don't have much time they have.
So that alleviates some of the. The baggage in the the lunchroom too, so we're gonna offer it nine to twelve, ninth grade to twelfth grade, they have to have the contract. So that alleviates some of the the baggage in the the lunchroom too, so we're gonna offer it nine to twelve, ninth grade to twelfth grade, the contact permission, we're working on that right now. Without that parent permission, they're not gonna be able to go, if they abuse it and they come back late, they're not gonna be able to go. They'll they'll lose their privileges for certain periods.
They will go as a group then too?
They can go as a group, um you know, if we can't control like who's riding in whose cart off school campus. Like for instance, we can't allow it during an activity, it's a sponsored district activity, if we if we say we're going, I don't know. Can't even think of town, but if we're going there for a game, they can't drive each other and go play.
Mm-hmm.
Cause the bus is considered part of the school district, you know, but this is a different situation, and that's why we get parent permission.
So, will the teachers, is attendance taken at the beginning of every hour?
Attendance taken, yes.
Okay, so when they come back.
They have to check in and out of the office.
Oh, they have to check in and out of the office, okay.
So they'll know, they're like, they pick that, and if they use that, then they'll lose it for a week, two weeks.
Okay.
It's a little bit easier to do it in this building than where we're over there, I mean, how many in and outs and, yeah.
Yeah. Entrances.
They have to sign in and outs.
We'll have to keep an eye out, cause we we've done open campuses before and we'd have them call a friend who's in the building, hey, I'm gonna have, coming in a little bit late, can you come to the back door and let me in, so we're standing by the back door.
What are you doing? There's there's no risk of concern for liability and all that?
That's why we get parents permission.
Otherwise move on to our, I guess we tied in our open campus discussion calendar, that's all right. Move on to our first read policy.
Um, just another slew of policies, these uh just a preview for your guys. We got the four hundreds and the five hundreds done, um four hundreds are staff, five hundreds are students. Quite a few interesting things in there, keeps us up to date, uh where we should be. I think we only have two more series to get done, so at the board meeting, there'll be a second read of the ones we presented before, it'd be second read and adoption. So after that second read is approved, if they're adopted by the district, then we'll work to get those right on our website right away. And these will come up for a first read, and then uh October's board meeting will be there for second read and adoption.
So, there's a ton of them in these two series, but I encourage everybody to go out and read them because I think there is. And these ones are a little more.
They're not as broad.
They're not as, yeah, they're not as broad.
Non-genere.
Non-genere, a little more uh related to day to day than overarching or you know, the last ones were born.
They are also tied to statute, some of them are required, so there are quite a few required policies that were in place before.
And all these, remember I when I talked about the policy, how or membership thing, they they said they'll go through it every spr- at the end of every school year in the summer, they'll go through with the policy committee and.
What they do after the end of the legislative session, they must be go through the league council, they look at all the policies that were affected by legislation and they'll update the language if it needs to be. And then they'll send out a big slew again and then we'll have to do all those.
That would be a lot shorter work, cause right now you're kind of starting from step one on this.
But we will be done by December, by the Christmas day, we will be done.
It's gonna be your first Christmas present.
My first Christmas present, see you guys.
Yeah. If we all go scam through these before the next, I guess when do we approve and maybe they have to do them all at the next, I guess four and five here at the next one?
So these will be approved en masse, so they'll be, four and five will be the first read, so en masse, you'll just approve the the policies found in four and five. And I'm gonna I'm gonna do links to them instead of putting them all in there, cause quite a few more than last time. And then you'll do the second read on the ones that you approved the last board meeting, one ahead of two, three hundred.
Okay. So we'll try to stay on top of that to review them, I guess.
I was very proud of our policy today.
Yeah.
We better look through them.
Cause it's a lot, and after a while, they all start kind of looking the same, so.
Supposedly I'll have to look through and make sure they all stink something in on us.
Yeah.
Test on us. None of that, no other questions right now on the policies? We move forward to the director of buildings and grounds.
So something I've kind of thrown around a little bit, director of building and grounds, um so it's kind of fashioned after a leak of studio, but this person will not be um. They'll be salaried, they'll be off the contract, so they won't be part of the staff uh sports staff contract. You can look at the different duties in there, um I chatted with Tom, um see if he's interested if the board approves. The board approves it, we'll have this in there at the works uh the regular meeting in September plus his possible contract, so the board approved both of those. I I didn't.
Just be a twelve month one.
Create this, I did, yes, this will be a twelve month employee, it will be every year it'll be um renegotiated.
Mm-hmm.
Um typically what you do with directors and you do with like business manager. Lot of times your administrative assistants aren't on the the union contract, so you would negotiate them at the same time too. Any confidential employee, um you would, and confidential means people that work directly in with negotiations, so. They might not work with negotiating team, but they work with the budgeting salaries and work with pulling uh data for proposals, so those people would be uh confidential. So it's it's always one year contract and it's renegotiated every year.
I feel like for that specific position, it makes a ton of sense to have it be a salary position, because there are after hours, you know, weekend. Type things and that would alleviate that ever a worry of overtime.
Yeah, and right now overtime, they've been, everybody's been doing very good.
Good.
Uh monitoring their own lives, some people, um um for for instance, our lead custodian will flex a lot of his time. Um for instance, he came in and helped with cleaning yesterday or during uh the volleyball game or afterwards, but he left early.
Okay.
Sorry for the shit, and so this will help with that, and um yeah, I'm proposing, we're I'm working with him on salary proposal, which will be, I think, good. Um some other benefits, which are pretty minimal, I think a lot of work pulls from the sports staff contract, but.
So you say hours per week, the salary, then it would be forty hours or whatever's needed, right?
Correct, so other duties is assigned, um so the forty hours is in the base.
Base, but then salary, if it needs sixty this week, he needs to take about sixty.
Yeah.
Question I have is, so we went from hourly, we go to salary. So he's he doesn't, he's not driving bus now at the same time, I mean, is he is he getting paid a bus driving route and hourly? I mean, I don't know how that worked before, but just so we're not like um paying him more for doing less.
Right.
You know, see where I'm going here, I, cause I don't know everything that was going on behind the scenes, but I just want to make sure he's compensated correctly, but I also don't wanna overpay either.
Right, it it wouldn't be overpaying, um it would, so before he got paid for his regular salary. Or it's regular way, just that he clocked in and out on, and then he got paid bus driving duty, pay on top of that, so this was, it's not equivalent to that. Um it's, there's, it's not quite equivalent to what um his base wages were, plus the overtime. So it's under that as well, not far under that, because I think we need it to be at least a little equitable, cause if you look at the amount of hours they'll be putting in. Especially when it comes to snow, or this and that, or if we have a a weekend, something that needs to be done, like we've had already similar air exchangers. They've gone off on the weekends and they have to come in a week so, that just happens.
So now we're be looking at to a lawn, I don't I don't know, does it do the zower? Was he doing the mowing and the lawn care at the same time, or are we hiring that out, is that, just so we look at all the amenities here.
The most value of it.
So, I believe we need to contract lawn care out, at least for a portion of it, I mean, we know that the baseball field's gonna always be taken care, football field will be taken care of. Yep. So we need to look at practice field, um he'll probably be in charge of making sure that the old building. Um the lawn's cut at the old building, which it has been, um like some of the major areas and they've filled out back. With our, we have a pretty small custodial staff considering the size of this building, um so doing outside stuff is is pretty difficult for them.
Going through there, are there any other input or questions? I think with the snow removal, are we still planning on, is he is he gonna cover the snow removal yet this year, or are we looking at?
Have you done snow removal in the past, cause I always.
Last year we hired him out because it just got to be too much.
It's tough.
Plus he was driving bus then too.
That's true, well, usually.
We don't have the right equipment, to be honest, I don't think that thing is much that we have as much for snow removal.
Nope. With the two parking lots, you'd need a bucket loader, and you're gonna have to haul, and you can't just constantly put it out in the field, they're gonna have to actually eventually haul away too.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
He knows the person that we used for last season.
So we actually have to bid it out though, okay, so we'll do that and then of course we'll call him, who's done before, but.
Mm-hmm.
I I've done that everywhere, just because it's a lot to keep up with, because when he does snow removal, he's gotta do all the egress, he's gotta do the sidewalks, that's us. So if you have somebody come, even if you had two or three people that came in, that's gonna be a couple hours of work right there. And then put the parking lots up top of that, his day would be started like two in the morning. Whereas with big big equipment, they can come and get it done in a matter of a couple hours at most.
Yeah.
And for games?
Yes.
So.
That cause the sidewalks and yeah, you got a little bit more than what we have over there, so.
So if we do that, that little tractor we have is probably not necessary to um. And I don't know what they use it, I thought it was kind of just for snow removal, I thought.
I will let you know this, every district expires to have a little tractor. Especially if you have one where you can change a bucket out with forks.
I mean, we already have, so I'm like, we wanna get some.
No.
You're gonna find if you got rid of it, that you're gonna think.
Again, it's not worth that much, I just, yeah.
Probably have a dislike, you know, you gotta get them to leave or whatever reason.
We can put a brush on it too, and there's a lot of things you can do to it, and we used to do that, we we had a couple small tractors, put a brush on the front and brush the sidewalks off, a lot of.
There is a brush for that little bucket.
Tool kit.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just not very maneuverable.
Mm-hmm.
I don't. You can do it, but it's really slow. Yeah, that it's it's putsy getting around. Well, it's kind of, yeah, but.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't, it's cumbersome compared to.
And you don't wanna do, when I'm around, is leave the keys in the tractor.
Oh.
I'm an old equipment operator, when you do that, you go, I see things to do.
For the record, I keep my equipment, my keys and my equipment in the fall, so you're welcome to drive by.
Jumping the john there, I used to operate twenty ton scrapers, do the dozer, leave a D eight dozer out with the keys out, it will be gone, I'll be doing some.
Be a little.
Yeah.
You wanna ditch that, you let me know.
Uh Andy mentioned a couple landscape items to maybe be dealt with with that October walkthrough, what was he referring to?
Yes. Um, well, we've had issues with just the seating out here.
Yes.
Um so basically the walkthroughs just kind of, and trying to get the company here, and it looks like it's doing better now though, I was gonna say.
Yeah.
It's better, we just need some fall care now, get rid of the weeds.
Mm-hmm.
We walked out there, there's a difference from when we walked out there.
Yeah, it looks like a lot of the, whatever that broadleaf weed was, a lot of that is gone.
They need to get the crab grass control, otherwise it's gonna take.
Crab grass and barn barnyard grass, we looked it up.
Barn, barn, which is the barn weeds or.
If we could put put some weed and feed down to kill that off before snow sets in, then that'll be great.
Which kind of puts me into the other thing I was gonna mention is the, with the like walking path, we may need a little gas spray or two.
Oh, yeah, spray, yeah.
We're gonna end up with just weeds and grass coming through.
We do have a sprayer that goes on.
I honestly don't know.
We do, um I actually, cause I don't wanna just spray for mosquitoes on the football field, just don't have enough time to do it.
Yeah.
But I talked to Tom, we do have a sprayer that goes on the back of a side by side.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Good enough.
Yeah, that would be.
Just be one of the things that need to be on the list, I would say.
The two light bulbs out here driving crazy too.
What about?
They are burned out and they have been for.
On the building or?
On the building.
Okay.
It's the first light and the fifth light, and they've been burned out for about a year.
Okay.
I don't know if that fixture needs to be changed and that's a punch list item versus just a simple.
You guys should have brought it back, you guys should write me a hundred views, so.
Okay.
And then all your ladder with.
Well, bringing that up. What's going on behind the building here, we have grass running up to the building, not sure why, when we built the building, we didn't put like strip of rock in there. Cause as you mow and you trim, you're gonna ruin the edge of the building and you have to trim, so that's something we should be looking at, doing some landscaping, just no shrubs, just rock, cause you.
I would love it if it was cement, a sidewalk.
That would work too, but cement or rock, so you get rid of the maintenance, round up, you can take care of.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Two forty you can take care of.
I I honestly, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
It's gonna make it gonna look, and it's gonna work like it's.
Too much rock out here, it should have been over there.
But we should, something should get done back there.
It would finish it off nicer, you wouldn't have to trim.
Yeah, and you're gonna end up with, you're gonna have it ruined with the lawnmower, we rip it down the road.
Yeah.
That's a big, a good point.
So what we can do is, I think we can put that on for next year, so next round of L T F M, we build up those reserves. Another thing I wanna look at is buying an affordable scissor lift.
Yeah.
Because we're gonna have to call somebody in every time we need to change a light in the gym.
I guess the concern on that was like, where do we store it at?
That was the kind of, we did bring that up last year, you know, get find used ones, but it's the it's the where to put it type of thing that we didn't have either, we didn't know.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think we figure that out, I think we just save a lot of money in the long run.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Agree.
If we change these lights, we're gonna have to get uh one of our electricians come out and do it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and every time it's expensive.
Or like tax. Or somebody with a boom truck.
I think you can find somewhere to store that then, a list, if you can get a reasonable one.
They're just gonna bring cherry picker out and do it. You're right, I don't know how you do this, I don't know.
I only got.
And if we're looking at the kind of property management or whatever, I, these bushes. Not the best uh selection, I think, for our our setting, you know, we're red rock central. I I could see some nice big chunks of red rock sitting in here, then some of these bushes or, you know, some grasses or something like that.
It's a little overkill.
It's a little overkill.
I would, yeah.
The issue with the bushes is the maintenance, want to care.
Yeah, they gotta be trimmed all the time.
Yeah.
It'd be trimmed, now it's, what's it gonna cost us just maintain it?
Well, I wouldn't have put them in.
I wouldn't be there.
I wouldn't be there.
What we've done in the past is if we want flowers or anything like that, we buy big batters.
The pot.
Yeah.
Only honestly, I don't know why they even put them there in the first place, just the rocks will finish it off and it's enough.
So it's possible that that was part of the architect plan?
Probably.
Probably was.
And nobody pulled it out, nobody thought to pull it out.
But it's even like that's your, eliminating them, cause it's just gonna be.
Oh, I mean, the weeds.
In the in the.
Costs, long-term costs.
The weeds are. Look at the weed, right here.
Give you a lot of mass from that's the.
In the bush.
All that.
I put the sprayer and it'd be done, you know.
Yeah.
To pull them off for nothing else.
We, well, after the thing we got, probably pretty.
Right, we just spend. We just have to spend a day too.
Yeah, right now is the best.
Yeah.
I mean, it it almost seems like a loss, but yet it's not, because you're gonna have to have a guy out there busy working on it too, so.
Yeah.
Pull them, make one of them, replant, I don't know, whatever, yeah.
Those, they're yours, I don't wanna.
That posts on Facebook, if anybody wants it, bushes come pull it up and see.
Yeah.
Maybe a bunch of them coming up.
Better tell her city.
Pull flowers.
Yeah.
These are pulling up in the near future before they get rid of too big.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I wouldn't feel bad about seeing.
No, I wouldn't either.
I like.
And you can eliminate them by half, I think you just work.
Yeah, so.
Right, I think there's, yeah, simpler options, more attractive options, and you, you know, maybe focus on the front.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
With something that needs a little more work and simplify back here.
Yes.
Right.
I agree.
I think we are.
Works clean and.
Uh, as Jake's getting out of here, a good um welcoming gift, giving him all the plants.
I bet.
He's not allowed to speak for himself, so just delegate.
What if the committee's gonna sign him up?
Otherwise, with buildings and ground, is there any other?
We spoke with him about this too, okay.
And you said that one pretty well?
Yes.
Otherwise I can't, is there anything else that, in buildings and ground?
No.
We can move on to our dance club discussion.
So we were approached, um Kobe was approached by this, um. I just. It was brought to my attention that she can't afford to reserve our theater with that ten percent uh to sell fee. So I thought it's a goodwill gesture, we should. Weave that for her, um she said there's a couple opportunities they have to use their theater coming up, she said they guarantee they're gonna sell out. She said there's a couple opportunities they have to use their theater coming up, she said they guarantee they're gonna sell out, that's also for our community. I know some of the the kids aren't red rock central kids, but a lot of them are. So, I just, I know it's for profit and she's gonna use the other building fees, that facility use fees, she's fine with paying that. I think it's an opportunity to showcase what we have, it's an opportunity to get our kids involved, it's an opportunity, who knows, maybe some kids from other districts will come in and look at that and say, man, I wanna go to school there.
Well, I don't like the idea that she takes it out of town and goes to, let's say that.
No.
Nobody.
So I would rather be here.
I would too.
But I don't think anybody did.
I would too, I think, um.
That's what it takes then.
When we were putting together that facility use. We based it off of area schools, so I don't think we're completely out of line.
Yeah.
The one thing that I did question after we did pass it though was the ticket sales percentage. I don't know.
I know we were kind of valid, maybe unless we overvalued it, but we were valuing what we have too.
We're just looking at how many dollars she's bringing in, how many times she can turn it in a day.
Mm-hmm.
It's true, I'll let you know what we did, we had a pretty modest, uh not modest, like a pretty good building use fund, we didn't charge for ticket sales. Cause they're renting your building for a commercial purpose, so um our our things, we should never be in the business of trying to make money off of things like that.
I don't think that was ever the, well, like the for-profit classification is a little bit different, but um with with the. Dance recital specifically, it was partially because it just took that out of service for everything for us for days.
So part of them, they need two days.
So. And I think when they had previously done it in the other school, which we did not have a facility use agreement at all, um they started like on. Wednesdays maybe or Thursdays, so it was, you know, Wednesday through Saturday or Thursday through Saturday.
So what she explained this time is she needs, she'll need it for two days for her performance, one day for rehearsal.
Yeah.
It should probably be towards the evening, and then the day of the performance.
Yeah.
I can't remember what else in there, we we'd have to discuss the. The use of the audio system, the sound system, we wanna make sure that somebody's certified to run that level of equipment they're using, the sound.
Yeah.
No, that was a concern we were, a lot of us were stressing that we wanna protect our asset.
I think at the time that we were doing that too, it was just so brilliant, I mean, it was not even completed, if we're being honest, like it was still being built.
We gotta win or train them, cause I I know, you gotta think, you gotta think of it like this, oh I should change that, this is the way I look at it. Our schools are community centers.
Mm-hmm.
You know, um. By allowing somebody to rent our spaces and use it, we're helping our community too, so we're giving back, because. It's not gonna be just the families of those kids that are dancing, well, what else is there to do with it, where? I grew up in a small town, um there's not much to do around here, so it gives an outlet for our community as well, I mean, I just think it's supportive of our community. I've had, we've had traveling theater groups come through and rent our facilities before, um I've waived the fees for them sometimes, cause our community had nothing.
Mm-hmm.
It gave an option, and they packed the house with our community members, so I think sometimes it's worth. Allowing them cheaper route into using the facilities, just for the better of our community.
So we need to revisit that policy then.
I was just gonna say, should we just relook at that entire policy?
We should look at it from, we changed one part, we should look, revisit it, not to say we're changing it all, but just we should be.
At least that.
You're not gonna just wait for a while, you're gonna have to look at it for everyone.
Right, exactly.
Now we're in here, I think it's easier for us to gauge it too, cause we're in here, we know the flow of the building better, we kinda know what it is, personally first did it, it was all new and.
I mean, and we went from zero to sixty, we had nothing in place, there was no fees, there was no exchange, there was no um permitting, insurance, none of that stuff, so. We kinda started based on what other comparable, you know, newer facilities were charging.
Cause now we can make it work for us instead of, you know, going up to another district.
Right.
Yeah, and I could even find my old, uh, we had a facility use policy and we included all the application in there, I made it very. Very detailed, there were steps and people you have to contact all along the way.
Mm-hmm.
Like if we're custodial, your your opportunities are to hire one of our custodians, or to pay a custodial deposit that's refundable if the building, if it's clean. Um you can use our kitchen, but you'll have to hire one of our um our kitchen help to cover while you're in there, I mean, there's, we had it very specific.
Should we just review that as part of our policy reviews and then go back to the board?
I would. Sure.
The other thing too is when you look at custodial, if um, let's say, the one that's under contract comes in there. We'd still be charging, does that go back to the person that did the work or go back to the district, just so that's clear upfront also.
So what we did is, if they, we had hourly rates for everything, so if they wanted to hire a custodial staff, they had to pay us an hourly rate for that, and we paid them, of course. Um, or they pay the deposit, two hundred fifty dollars if they leave stuff in the theater, two hundred fifty bucks, a worth of salary. Or worth of wage time will probably clean it up. The only way they got that back is we came in inspected and everything was clean, for us, it started off, we were working with a um, a local. Music instructor that did theater productions and everything as kids, they came in, they painted a bunch of set stuff and got painted everywhere.
Mm-hmm.
So automatically put it off limits to her, um and we didn't have a very stringent facilities use plan either.
Yeah.
So.
Ours started because it, events were costing us money.
Yep.
We were paying extra overtime for our custodials, we had a, we had an event where it was twelve hours of cleaning after. That cost us money.
Yeah, we should never do that, um there are times we waive it too, if the boy scouts don't come in and use the facility, that's a nonprofit, we always waive, I mean, we waive things like that. I'll, I'll tell you what, I think maybe we should need a policy committee, we'll look at ours, I'll pull off what I created my last district, just uh compare how we covered those different things.
Have you looked at ours yet?
I have looked at it briefly.
So we have different categories, it's like boy scouts be different, so, the customer has a, Tom, that we put him on salary, he's watching over the facility. Does the pay on this or beyond his salary, is that part of his salary?
So.
Just so it's clarified ahead of time, so it's not like, well, uh uh expectations set correctly on both sides.
Well, the money won't go directly to him, it's.
No, it come to us, but we have to reimburse him because we're charging out.
No, but if we had, say for instance, K S D dance club came in and they wanna hire one of our custodians, it wouldn't be Tom.
Yeah.
Cause I need Tom here the next day, he might have, we have our son that comes in, could be that person, which I think wouldn't have a problem doing that whatsoever. Um, or one of our current custodians.
I see what you were saying.
Yeah, yeah, just so we have expectations set, yes.
Yeah.
Cause then, yeah, like you said, you brought it up earlier too, like given the garbage fees, as you said, I think we'd have that, we have that in in there anyways too, was that the garbage fees?
Yeah.
For disposal and.
Like so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's in there about having somebody run the music too, I think.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking there, what?
Yeah, that is, we should, we should start succession planning for that whole entire thing though, like I don't know if that gets wrapped into a class or what, but. More people should learn how to operate that equipment, because we paid a lot of money for that equipment.
Well, right now the soundboard is with the company.
Yeah, it's not here.
Okay.
So. I agree though, you should have like sophomores or something, teach a couple of them and then have a few staff that know how to do it.
Yeah, if it's wrapped into the video board.
Well, I think a class, so we did like mass communication classes, here's what we found.
Yeah.
Um, we had one student in particular that ran all of our tech, and was amazing at it, and his dad owns an audio visual company called Mobile Pro.
Mm-hmm.
When he graduated, and there was nobody to do it, so what we do is we.
That's a probable students, that they help with.
We completely automated our theater, so it's a button, you push a button, if we say it's a, this is a dance recital, you push a button, this is dance recital all the way.
Yeah.
And all the audio tunes itself automatically, which ours does as well.
Hmm. Yeah.
You know, like if we wanna have a a, just a theater play, a theater production there, theater and it automatically tunes itself.
Yeah, I guess the reason we built that into that facility's use was because we don't want somebody totally green coming in and pressing buttons and.
Yeah.
We have.
I mean, it's very advanced equipment.
The training, I think right now, the only person that knows how to run it is Larry.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah, I think once the, someplace we can have the vendor come in and train a a decent amount of people.
Yeah.
Like the music teacher, I was thinking, you know.
Music teacher, whoever drama advisor is, those people should know how to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. For sure.
And that should be, that's, if they're doing those things, that should be a part of, they're just, job description is under, learning that, so we have it.
I would say open it up to whoever is interested in doing it as well.
Yes, that, as well, correct, whoever else wants, but you know, that's, if they're gonna be doing it, they should know how to do those things also.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That way they're not, they're also, they're not dependent on someone else that, where they could do this, but I don't know how to do it.
And then if Leonard does retire, um her next tech coordinator is going to have to be able to do it.
Yeah.
For sure.
I don't know if there's anything else on.
I do know how to turn lights on and off, can I?
You do know, with the screener on the switch?
I I actually, there's podium up there and there's a thing on the corner, there's this little button, you say you push the button and something happens.
Oh, yeah. It goes in there cleverly.
So do we owe her an answer by a deadline or just as soon as possible?
Um, I think, I think as soon as possible.
Okay.
Yeah, and I told her she wanted, cause they are trying to plan productions right now, and I think the first one's October, I think they wanna do some halftime or whatever football games. Um, but it's just gonna have to wait till board approval, I think that we could probably meet as a policy committee, have something for the board at September meeting.
So what does per performing at halftime have to do with?
No, this is something dumb.
Oh, okay, okay.
But performing at halftime, um two hundred do that, so we don't have a problem with that, but they're trying to, they're trying to schedule their events now, so.
Oh, got it.
That's how the whole thing came up, was wanting to perform at halftime.
Okay.
Otherwise, I think everybody's good with review on that, it sounds like, so.
Can I ask a question about Kelly's dance club, you know, it's not on the agenda?
About them?
No.
Oh, no.
What is the status on the old building sale?
Um, so he's working on getting it, I just got an email from him last week, he's working on getting it set up for adoption.
Okay, so that is in process.
Joe from Superior will be on our agenda. He wants to negotiate buying the shop from the board.
That includes the rest of the building?
No, it doesn't, but he has a plan for how to separate from the building, I don't know exactly what he's talking about, so I said to come present to the board, so he'll do that right after public participation. He'll present to the board what his thoughts are, and then the board can, and you don't decide that night anymore. But. I don't know, I just, thoughts in the back of my mind, what if that purchase helped with demolishing the building?
If, if, so it, the story struggles with that, it's pretty unfair to Brenda and her crew.
Oh.
That we told her we were not gonna sell that whole building, cause we wanted to sell it together.
Right. He, well, I would say, and that's what I told him, I told him twice, he wanted to buy it, and I said, well, the board wants to sell the whole building, well, how much do you want for it, I said, well.
Yeah.
I'm sure they'll make it worth your time.
Right.
Um, but it's probably the thought of maintaining that liability of it, so he came up with some idea, so I just told him, just present to the board, and you could say no.
Yeah.
So.
I wanna go to that whole, whole facility.
Yeah.
Me too.
I think we.
Yeah, if we're gonna, if we're gonna sort of make that out, then we should put it out for bids for just that portion of it then.
I think it was really crappy though, that we turned Brenda and her off her way for a portion of the building and then sell it to.
Yeah. And like I said, just talk to him.
Yeah.
Or let him talk to you, and you'll know what his ideas are.
Did he have a timeline on the auction?
He does, no.
No, once, have we listed it with him yet?
He, he's listing it now, yes.
Then how would be able to just, how would we really take part of it out then?
Oh, we could pull, we could pull it out, and I guarantee you wouldn't have a problem with it, so he's basically doing a service for us, is what it boils down to. Uh so if we pulled it away from him completely, I don't think we have a problem with that either.
I want the rest of that building gone.
I do too.
Can you get a, you you had said that you worked with a prior company that did like the brick salvage or like.
I wanna just start calling.
A cost or demo.
Well, I can call companies around here, um I can tell right now the biggest hole back will be the asbestos.
Yeah. Do either of you two have a contact or, Bruce, you two, for the guy that did the Storden elevator in the Storden school?
She's gotta find a swamp, you gotta find a swamp, but don't put it out there, like.
Um, I don't think that's.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
Wasn't his fault.
No, but I don't think he would, I can't remember if he was even.
Where was he, was it, is over, um over by Kenneth, Minnesota?
Certified to do that type of thing.
Was it any like Kenneth, Minnesota or something?
I can, I can check and.
It was too revealed.
Yeah.
He wasn't by the book.
Fine.
Yeah, I'll find out, I'll, I'll get a contact for that and we're taking you out.
Yeah, it's inexpensive.
The asbestos.
But ultimately, he was, they were the ones that finished it.
He's responsible, that's right.
Mm-hmm.
They had to take it back to a swamp and.
Yeah, but after, after all the proper steps were taken, he completed the work.
Yeah.
Well, they did.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And did a good job at it.
Yeah.
It was.
And I understand it was.
He was handed off something that wasn't totally ready to happen.
Right, and I think it was relatively inexpensive for both projects, we didn't see them.
Yeah.
Yeah, for the size of that.
Yes, plus this is just the nasty one.
I said, since we're thinking of the old building, is there a time that we should all go through there just to, we.
For what?
Just to kinda see what's left, so we know where, that, if there's anything we need to worry about, or just let it all go, is what's in there?
If it ain't been out by now, I don't think anybody's looking for any of them, you know, I don't.
Yeah.
Go ahead if you want to.
We should probably get them other two buildings over here though, if you want. Yep.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, that's one thing I think we just decided on, that's what we're gonna put on.
Like that garage, that regular garage thing in the garage.
Yeah, that, that little garage thing.
Did our proceeds from the auctions, you get those from the auction company yet?
I think, yeah, I thought that was all the positive.
I don't know, who's asking?
Yeah.
No clue.
I think, yeah. Didn't know, where are we at on the flight pool, will that be in place?
It'll be in place for Friday, cause someone's going to get me a contact, or somebody's just got a contact for me, cause apparently.
Is it out?
Um, should be, he, he's got it over in the fly, he's working on it today, um. And then uh, that'll be ready for the home game, and they're gonna, there's gonna be a flyover, we're gonna have flag raising, see our money fly over it.
And I'm like.
I can get somebody to contact you, if that's what you.
That'd be great, I try, I called Legion, I haven't had great success with getting callbacks from, pretty much anybody.
Okay.
The Legion phone number is like the.
The rest.
The fluid number.
Yeah.
Well, I called the person who texted me.
Oh, yeah.
Before, and I called that person, I haven't gotten a reply, I have that voicemail.
Yeah. Yeah.
I was thinking of a prank call.
I mean, is that it, right to the right of the scoreboard?
Yeah.
I'll get ahold of somebody tomorrow too.
Okay. Uh, yeah, certainly.
Yeah.
Oh, I was thinking that was a full post.
So, um, that was substantially less than what we'd asked the P T P A, like P P T A gave us, so we're gonna use the remainder of it to do landscaping around it. Possibly do one of the ad class and do that or something.
You want some bushes?
Yeah.
And then we'll make the response, which we're waiting on and trimming them.
Will it be lit?
Yes.
If we do a a lot, yeah, like.
He's got, well, he's got a solar light going, so you can leave a flag on the pole as long as it's lit, so usually if it's solar light, it goes on the top. I think it'll be a pretty cool deal.
Yeah.
And then with the veterans and uh, is it veterans and uh, active duty and first responders, that was actually Shaiya's idea from the P T A, I thought that's a great idea.
Mm-hmm.
I think they did something like that last year, they had them like flyover.
Yeah, the last.
Are you still part of that auxiliary?
No, I'm not.
You never were. Why was I thinking? Um, that year they had the color guard, but that would be cool to raise a flag on or. Or honor guard or whatever.
Mm-hmm, they had a couple from each town, didn't they?
They, and they read off a bunch of names, right? Legion should have a color guard.
Mm-hmm.
I was thinking similar patrol, but I don't know if they have that. I don't know if there's actually some.
You just started to do it.
Yeah, like I said, we reached out to all, every, each one of us.
Did that.
Restored, I don't know, just kinda struck notice on Storden.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll get you certain numbers.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Well, you can make the call for me and scare him.
And I can do that too, I can do that.
They know you and they don't know me, I think that might be the problem.
Yeah.
Otherwise, was there anything else that, anybody can think of? Old buildings, I guess the next. Next, our business meeting, a regular meeting will be the seventeenth, and next work session is the first, and that will be, we haven't heard any objections yet for Jake, no official, in the public.
Yes, may anybody upset enough yet, I don't see it. So what will be right after a public comment in that one spot, very very first um new business will be rejected, to be seen, so that we can enact one of it in the rest of the year.
And on that, we should plan on. Like officer for the, fill the vice chair seat to that meeting.
Don't have to.
Don't have to.
So, uh vice chair is the one that, that's an optional uh officer, so I think. So op, vice chair is the one that, that's an optional uh officer, so I think, I mean, you do, you could do it if you want, I think you should discuss it.
Yeah, we'll wait until January.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. If I end up sick or can't, then who who's next in line to run the meeting?
Secretary.
Se- secretary? A clerk?
I'm last.
Oh, you're not, you're you would do great. I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that, throw that out there, so.
Get secretary and then treasurer after that.
Okay. We too, so.
Would you get through it?
Yeah. Yeah. I think we covered everything. No other questions or concerns from anybody?
Did the bus thing go okay?
Oh yeah, I thought something, uh uh there are just some snacks here and there with people not knowing what route they're on or some confusion with some of the fans, but it's it's starting to smooth out pretty good.
Okay.
Yeah. They're not lacking any drivers, so.
Yes.
That's good, that was the one thing I wanted to ask.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, there is a a meeting scheduled?
For?
With the bus drivers or?
Yes, yes, with the negotiations committee.
For.
Friday.
Friday morning, eighth day.
What are they doing for bus garage right now?
That's probably what Joe wants.
Yeah, but I mean, if we don't get it, will they, they use it, they gonna use it till we sell it, or do we have any agreement with them?
Not probably use it till we sell it, because there is an agreement with them, they rent it and rental yard. So they are renting it from us.
Okay.
Um.
What, you don't rent, what, how much should it let, we get a month for that?
Yeah, it gives seventy five hundred bucks for the year.
Yeah. Is it seventy five or nine, ninety five, that was nine.
I think it was nine, but we didn't take the wall out, so I think it's seventy five.
Okay, okay.
I think.
So it's, it's not a huge amount.
So if, if. If we sold it, that contract would go with the purchase agreement.
The, so if we sold it, well, the only thing we would do is lose the
That the rebel.
The lease that they're, yeah.
Okay.
Then we save it on electricity and utilities.
So in in insurance and insurance.
And then that, any other input or new business that anybody can think of? Hearing none, it sounds quiet, I'll try, I'll call for a new German, so.
Thank you. Did you get anyone?
I probably, I don't know, like cool. I don't steal.